Pass them off to an assessment center. And then the assessment, so it's completely.
But they'll do it both ways, in the same article.
Interviewing kind of scenario.
Thank you, everybody. Please make sure you are unmuted, like I just realized I am. Good evening, everybody. Want to recognize and remember a few local residents who passed away recently. Frank Zavinsky, aged 83, was a longtime resident of Salisbury. Passed away unexpectedly on March 24th at his home. He was born in Amesbury in 1941, graduate of Amesbury High School, class of 1959. And soon after his graduation from high school, Frank joined the Air Force. Served for several years. After his military service, he worked for General Electric assembling jet engines and changed careers. Became a police officer, starting with the town of Amesbury for several years, and then became an officer with the Newburyport Police Department for 20 years. And again, he passed away in March, and our condolences to his family. Mary Larnard, also born in Amesbury, passed away recently. She was born in 1983, graduated from Amesbury High School also, and went on to earn degrees and spent her 36-year teaching career from 1965 to 2001 at Newburyport High School, first as a math teacher, becoming chair of the math department, then as the principal from 1988 to 2001. She was the first female president of NH, president, excuse me, first female principal of Newburyport High School. She was also the first female trustee of the Institution for Savings, first female president of the Newburyport Rotary Club. And as a tireless civic leader, Mary was presented with a key to the city of Newburyport in 1983, excuse me, 1993. Mary passed away on April 4th after a long illness, and she leaves behind a loving family, many great friends, and countless young people whose lives she touched in her remarkable, beautiful life. And our condolences go to her family as well. So please join me in remembering those two. Thank you, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, if you could call the roll?
I would be happy to, Mr. President. The roll call for April 8th, 2024. Councilor Shan is not with us. Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zied?
Here.
Councilor Dunneou?
Here.
Councilor Granis?
Here.
Councilor Harmon?
Here.
Councilor Khan is not with us. Councilor Lane?
Here.
Council McCauley?
Here.
Councilor Preston?
Here.
And Council President Cameron?
Here. Note for the record that Counselor Shan should be joining us remotely. She texted a short while ago, so hopefully she'll be joining us.
Very good. Late files?
So we have four late files. We have two transfers. Mayor's Office Opera Funds, $964,000 to Phillips Drive, $700,000. Mark One Lane Study, $120,000. Streets and Sidewalks, $144,000. And Transfer 189, Mayor's Office Free Cash, $25,000 to Fire Injured on Duty, same amount. We're proposing both go to B and F. Then Appointment 486 is the Police Marshal Screening Committee. And order, the accompanying order, Order 559, the committee order, that we're proposing goes to Public Works and Safety.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files and then refer them, 188 and 189, to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole for those two.
Okay.
Please, and then Appointment 486 and Order 559 to Public Works and Safety.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll do a roll call. Actually, we, actually, Counselor Shan is here, so we will do a roll call.
Very good.
And once I figure out how to choose panelists. Counselor Shan, we're going to do a roll call on accepting late files and referring them to their respective committees. And you are here for the record.
Okay. Having said that, Counselor Shan. Maybe we'll come back. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan, can you hear me?
Okay, we'll call that a 10 to 0 to 1.
Okay.
Not, not voting?
Gotcha. That leads us to public comment.
And we'll take public comment from remote attendees. If people in the audience want to raise their hands, and again, it's residents of the city of Newburyport can speak to a topic that is on the agenda in two minutes. And I see at least one hand remote, and we'll get there in person. We're going to do in-person public comment first. And that would be Walt Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Walt Thompson, State Street. Praise the rescinding of the money for the Bartlet Mall project. I hope next time we do it with maybe gravel on the bottom, save a couple million dollars and maybe provide a way for turtles to get in and out. The reason I'm here is there is a potentially dangerous situation at the mall next to the great and wonderful, very popular playground at Auburn Street opposite the Kelly School. A steep ramp has been cut from the brick sidewalk on down to the, near the frog pond. It's too steep for some walkers and those pushing strollers. The city's Disability Commission has written that a 5% slope is best. The ADA regulations call for a maximum of 8.3% slope. The city says it received a variance from the state for 9%, but I haven't verified that because I can't find the licensed surveyor who said it was 9%. I'm a guy that likes to trust but verify. It's very important to me. I had a, I did a multi-point survey last week. I got a maximum of 12% with my iPhone. I know that's not as accurate as a surveyor, but it's all I had. There's already a paved ramp next to the 1800 Superior Courthouse. There are alternatives to this ramp. It's been rough. It's going to be addressed immediately. If we wait, it'll be paved and then it'll be too late. So I'm just asking city councilors if you would, in the next week, walk by, take a look at it. I walk there every day with my dog, and people I engage at that spot are quite alarmed at the steepness of the ramp, particularly at the very top. So I would just invite you to take a stroll. It's a beautiful park. It's a wonderful mall, and I know we're moving forward to make it even better, but this ramp is not one of those spots. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Seeing no other public commenters in person, I'm going to call on Ann Wolkovich remotely, who had her hand up. And Ann, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak. Ann, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, so two minutes on your topic.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
I just wanted to make a comment as one of the butters to Mark One Lane, and I know that you guys have, are addressing that this evening. But I just wanted to ask for a yes vote for approving the money towards trying to come up with a permanent solution. It's a safety hazard, the, I don't know if anybody's been down there, I know everyone has. And it's, it's, I went by today and the water is over two feet deep, and it is not draining. And what is draining is draining into all of the properties that are around that area or below grade of that area. The two store water collection points are not functioning, and the amount of rainwater is only going to get progressively worse as the spring season continues to bring more and more rain. And it is just, it's turning into such a large pond that it is overflowing the street and pouring into the neighboring homes and properties and causing property damage. But mostly, I'm concerned because it is such a big safety issue where we have two preschools in Long Island neighborhood and plenty of children that like to play, and I'm concerned that somebody is going to fall in and get hurt. I mean, it's at the point of death, depth, that we now have mounds of rocks running in it, and it's just causing, it used to be fixed in a way that will work for the city and work for the residents. So I just wanted to just kindly ask that you guys approve to try to get this fixed.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ann.
Thank you.
So with no further public comment, we'll have the mayor's comment.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to bring the same enthusiasm and joy that Walt brought to the microphone. What's going on tonight? So first of all, we had a great event down at the waterfront, Casman Park. Thank you to Newburyport Recreation Youth Services. We, I mean, we had a couple of councilors that were there, but 500 people, maybe more, 1,000, probably 1,000 people down there to watch the eclipse, so that was pretty cool. So hats off to Andy Egmont and her team. I want to talk about storm cleanup. We're still, it's going to take another week, I think, to get up, get the cleanup happening all around town. DPS has been going nonstop. You know, you guys know about the Hale Street covert collapse. We're still around a five to 10-day period now where we're going to have to shut it down until the repairs can happen. We're still waiting for some more pipe to get delivered. I don't think it was delivered today. I was down there this morning. But again, thanks to DPS, and we'll get there. We're going to clean up. We've got a spring cleanup going on anyway, so this is just going to feed into that. The worst-kept secret in Newburyport, Marshal Murray is retiring in May, so that was official, officially announced today, so that is in your packet. He planned this. He is away on vacation, so he wouldn't have to deal with any of this, but he'll be back this week. So we're going to start that process. You've got your nine-member committee in your packet. Thank you for Counsel Lane for agreeing to serve on that with us. So we're excited about that. Marshal Murray, 30 years. I mean, the last, I think, eight as city marshal, quite a career, from Newburyport as well, so he certainly put his time in, and we're happy for him, even though it's a little bittersweet for him. So that's out there today. Frank Cousins will be leading the nine-member committee, as he did with the fire chief panel. Whittier in Northern Essex came out with a press release this week about a possible partnership. You've all seen my quotes. I'm cautiously optimistic about this. I think it's, I think it's a step in the right direction. I'm happy the Haley Driscoll administration is now getting involved. You know, after the vote has taken place, they're now getting involved, which is great. I think Lane Glenn is a great leader to get us through this process. This is a model that's happening all around the country, so, you know, why not try it here in Massachusetts? My only thing is I think we're going to, this is going to allow us to continue on our track with the 11 cities and towns to modify and amend the regional agreement. So thank you again for Counsel Ben Harmon, who attended the second Whittier Task Force meeting last week. So we can continue down that path while, you know, there's still a lot of questions to work out with this partnership, but I do think, you know, we're heading in the right direction there, so we'll have to wait and see. We are told, the 11 cities and towns are, that we are going to be involved every step of the way, but none of those, I can tell you, none of those conversations has really happened yet. I've had one conversation with Northern Essex about this, and even then, it was very, very vague, so we're looking forward to some of the more serious conversations to happen around this. Opera Funds is in your packet tonight. We had a great opera ad hoc meeting last week. We, you know, you can see exactly where we landed. We're looking at the Lower Atkinson Public Safety Project. We're looking at finishing Phillips Drive. You just heard from some public comment with the Mark One Lane Study, and also funding for Streets and Sidewalks as well. So I think we landed on a really good spot with the amount of money that we have left, and it's going to allow us to finish some really critical projects, so we're excited about that. Port Rec, Port Rec is going, going. We've got another community services meeting coming up. I know the last time you spent most of your time around with Ethan Manning around finances. We plan on coming to you shortly, hopefully by the end of the month, with a financial plan for the project, and then, then the fun begins. So we're looking forward to getting that to you. You know, we've put a lot of work into this, and I want to thank Kim Turner, Andy Egmont, and their teams for continuing to step up and moving this project forward. I'm not going to read this all day. I brought a lot with you guys this week, so I hope you guys take the time to read this. I'm not going to go through everything. And the Miva routes started today. Those are the new routes. I want to thank Noah Berger and his team at Miva for all their work, working with Anna Jakes downtown, the commuter rail station. Again, it's still free to ride. We had a really big meeting that Counselor Zied and Counselor Wright were at on Friday with the MRBA over at Plum Island. The Army Corps of Engineers presented their findings from the South Jetty Study. That was funded by an earmark that Senators Warren and Markey got for us a couple of years back. So this was the final presentation about what they believed. So they came up with four alternatives. They're going with alternative three. I'm not going to get into the weeds with this a little bit, but they do have an idea of what they'd like to do there. Senator Tarz's office is going to ask them to set up another meeting so we can kind of dive deeper into why that was chosen and what was, what was the reasons why the other three alternatives weren't considered. But it certainly was a step in the right direction. They think they've come up with something. And what's nice about it, too, they really gave us a lot of background on what's been happening there since we've put the sand back on the beach at Reservation Terrace. So again, it was a meeting filled with a lot of great information, but stay tuned for a little bit more details about the alternative that they chose, which was the third one. And lastly, there's an artichoke spillway field trip coming up. You know, we had that minor breach in January at the Little Artichoke Dam. They occur on January 13th, so members of the public were asking for some sort of presentation and maybe like a field trip down to the spillway, so we did arrange that. That's coming up on April 24th, and so there'll be a Q and A at the Senior Community Center at 2:00 PM. And then we're going to jump in the vans, and we're going to head on down and see it in person. But then, what's good about this is especially with the OPM talk and all those things, you got to get to see, you know, what projects we're really looking at right now around our water supply and how we're, how we're thinking about prioritizing them moving forward. And that's it. And I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Questions for the mayor, comments? Counsel Preston?
Yeah, not necessarily a question, but a comment around the meeting on the 24th. So firstly, thank you so much for your willingness to pull that together. You know, as some of you may know, I'm a Resiliency Committee member from the council, and, you know, it's, this is something that the Resiliency Committee is really excited about. I think we want very much for councilors to attend to really understand how high the stakes are with these types of infrastructure projects. We did have a breach in January. You know, it's something that I think people talked about as someday we are at risk of this happening, and lo and behold, it happened in January. And we came, frankly, pretty close earlier this week as well with this, so, or last week. So, you know, it's, I just really want to encourage all of you to attend, really understand what that project is and really what's at stake there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, mayor.
All right, have a great meeting. Good night.
That would bring us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for March 25th. There are a number of communications. Application 193, Ride to End ALS, to go to, they're all going to L and P, license permits. Application 194, Pride Parade, Saturday, June 1st. Application 195, Olive's Makers Market, Saturday, July 20th. Application 196, The Block Party on Howard Street between Forrester and Chapel, June 18th. Application 197, Lions Club Yankee Homecoming Race, 10-mile and 5K, Tuesday, July 30th. And Application 198, which is the Lions Club Bed Race, Thursday, August 1st, 5:00 to 8:00 PM. There are three appointments. Appointment 483, Kevin Hunt, 14 10th Street, Newbury, as Veterans Agent for Newburyport until 5/1/2025 to go to community services. Appointment 487, Thomas Bailey, 35 Marlborough Street, to the Water Sewer Commission as an alternate until 4:30/2026, PWNS. And Appointment 485, which is Paul Sowoso, Jr., 7 Hunter Drive, to go on the Water Sewer Commission until 2/1/25, also PWNS. Following items are removed from their respective committees. Budget and Finance Orders, 545, 546, 547, 548, 550, Transfer 186, Transfer 187. General Government Order 544. License and Permits, Application 186, 190, 191, and 192. Planning and Development, Appointment 482, Ordinance 166 and Communication 535. Public Works and Safety, Communication 546, Order 549. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion collectively to approve the consent agenda and receive and file the mayor's update?
Second. Whatever that is.
Artificial intelligence.
Okay, we, Counsel Shan is also going to try to talk via phone. You could unmute yourself from the phone, Counsel Shan. Okay. So motion made and seconded to collectively mayor's update and consent agenda. And Clark, you want to call the roll?
I do. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan is not with us. Counselor Lane? Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that gets us to the regular agenda?
It does. There are two communications. Communication 547, Retirement Board Retiree Cola Vote, and Communication 548, the FY Budget Process for FY '25.
Motion collectively to receive and file?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Motion made and seconded.
Just very quickly, if you have any comments on the budget process, feel free to send them to me. I just, budget's going to get very clogged, so I don't see a reason to refer it. And for those who are new, this is a pro forma, 547 is a pro forma notification that we get from the retirement board, but it is not our purview or decision in the end. They will make a decision, and then it will result in a change in the budget, but it's pro forma, so there isn't a decision per se for us to make. Just wanted to let you know why. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Roll call on receiving and filing Communication 547 and 548. Counselor Shan? Counselor Shan? We'll go back. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of note, Counsel Shan, I'll, I'll leave you unmuted, so if you can just control your, control yourself, rather than me muting and unmuting you, that will be quickly tiresome, so you can take control. All right, so orders?
Orders, so there are no transfers, no second readings. Orders, first order, 551, which is a gift acceptance Pioneer League fencing, $13,004.
Can we take all of them collectively? 551 through 558?
I certainly would be happy to. Let me, for the record, read them in. 552, gift acceptance, $6,300. 553 is refunding bonds. 554 is a senior workup program, increasing the amount to $2,000. Order 555 is consolidation of functions of the school committee with the city, Chapter 71, Section 37m. 556 is Perkins Park Project Amendment. Order 557 is the FY '25 CPC recommendations, and Order 558 is the Bartlet Mall Loan Order.
So motion collectively to refer all of them to Budget and Finance with Committee of the Whole added to 554, 555, 556, 57, and 58.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to collectively refer all to Budget Finance with those noted as Committee of the Whole. Any discussion? Roll call?
Terrific. This is on orders, for the record, 551 all the way to 553, then 554 and 5, all the way to 558 are Committee of the Whole.
Correct.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you for those suggestions. Moving to ordinances?
We have Ordinance 167, which is the residential seasonal dock fee.
Motion to continue to our next city council meeting, April 29th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll have more in Budget and Finance on this.
Okay.
Committee report.
All right, so motion was made to continue this to our next meeting, which is April 29th. Made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
On that motion to move it to April 29th. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
That leads us to Ordinance 168 with respect to handicapped spaces. I'd like to make a motion collectively for 168, 169, and 170 to be referred to Public Works and Safety.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Motion made and seconded to refer all three to Public Works and Safety. Counsel Lane?
I'm sorry, did I, I, I don't think I'm clear on this. Can this one go into the record?
There were three ordinances. 168 is handicap spaces. 169 is municipal fee street permits, and 170 is municipal parking facilities.
Amend municipal parking facilities?
Yes, the latter two are amending.
We're sending them all to PWNS. Oh, good.
And the motion is to send it to Public Works and Safety.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Counsel Lane, do you have a comment?
Street permits, why don't we include Public Works and Safety in that, license and permits?
They're parking permits. Yeah, they're parking permits. Parking generally is PWNS.
Correct, yeah, they are parking permits, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Who was the second on that?
I had Counsel Preston.
All right, great. All those, well, roll call, Mr. Clark, sorry.
On the aforementioned ordinances, 168, 169, and 170 to go to Public Works and Safety. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
That was something that had come up in the first conversation, privacy and access to who can view this, and how long is it retained for, and both for student and staff privacy. There's also a question of a city ordinance that exists that's relative to where and when cameras can be installed. That kicked off some conversation. But, long story short is, this Second Amendment, which is the latter paragraph in the bold with the underline, seeks to tie the connection between these cameras and their installation back to a policy that actually already exists from the Newburyport School Committee, as they are the policymaking body for the schools, initially passed in 2018, revised on 10/23, and subject frankly to amendment at any time by that body through a typical process. So, with all of that in the books, the committee did see fit to recommend approval to U3 to 0. They do think that they can get this done this summer, I think is kind of the intent, relatively quick turnaround, and it will also include some access controls as well for the external of the buildings, which is also very important. And I hope I've provided enough detail. If you still have any questions, we will do our best answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment, discussion? Councilor McCauley?
Yeah, I just have an additional question. It was noted in our discuss, thank you, Council President. It was noted in our discussion that the schools are actually seeking a grant for this to defray some of this cost. So, I may have missed that in the meeting. Is there language and agreement between the Finance Director, et cetera, and the schools that if they get this grant, that this money will be allocated to the bond repayment early? Or, you know, how exactly do we tie that back in?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So, and Ethan's here.
Ethan and also Sean Gallagher.
I will just say that, yes, thank you for reminding me, yes, they are applying for a grant. Obviously, it wasn't timely enough to know if it could reduce this. I do still want to be clear, this isn't actually a bond, it's just treated like a bond, so it's gonna be lease payments. We were told that effectively, there's no prepayment penalty, so in theory, if the grant is received, and it's received in a lump sum, it could be utilized to simply extinguish the payments, is my understanding. And again, I'll defer to the Finance Director and so forth, and so, I think I'll do that now rather than continue. I don't know if Ethan or Superintendent Gallagher...
Director Manning, if you want to add anything, or Sean Gallagher or Steve Burgholm, either of you wants to raise your hand, do so, but Ethan, I think you can talk right now. Ethan? Ethan, we see you. You seem to be unmuted while we see your name. You seem to be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, fantastic. So, yes, if the grant is received, it would reduce the amount of the agreement that's said in order to move forward, they do need to have the full authorization at this point, otherwise, they couldn't sign the contract. So, yeah, if the grant is received, the city will typically pay down that portion of the agreement earlier, and then we just need to make whatever was left after that.
Okay. Thank you. Satisfactory?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Have a roll call?
We have approval of Order 545. Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Zied.
Yes.
Councilor Dunneou.
Yes.
Councilor Granis.
Yes.
Councilor Harmon.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for those suggestions. Moving to ordinances.
We have Ordinance 167, which is the Residential Seasonal Dock Fee.
Motion to continue to our next City Council meeting, April 29th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll have more in Budget and Finance on this committee report.
All right. So, motion was made to continue this to our next meeting, which is April 29th. Made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
On that motion to move it to April 29th, Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Zied.
Yes.
Councilor Dunneou.
Yes.
Councilor Granis.
Yes.
Councilor Harmon.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file Order 546, Harbor Master Dock Season, Department Season Dock Fee. So, thank you, and thank you to the council for giving me some leeway on continuing the new ordinance that came in. So, let me back into that and explain why that is. So, Order 546 came in as sort of a request from the Harbor Master and Harbor Commission. What they'd like to do is actually establish a brand-new fee that doesn't exist. In the order, there were sort of some squivvener's hours where it's had increased from $4 a foot. Those had already been done some years ago. So, really, what the focus was, was on this new double-underlying seasonal dock permit, $50. First, let me explain what it is, and then why it couldn't be done by order and had to be converted into an ordinance. So, we had James Knapp from the Harbor Commission. We also had access to Paul Hoggas everywhere. And so, basically, what this really boils down to is, this is all about inspection or asking for inspection by owners of private docks on the river. So, primarily upriver in the Merrimack, there are people who have the ability to put in a private dock, and it's their own equipment, it's their own installers and so forth, and there's a desire to have a better process around ensuring that those docks are safe, and that they're not gonna, you know, float away and cause damage, and all those sorts of things. It kept being referred to as a 10A permit, 10A application. After some research, now learned that that's our friend, Chapter 91, Section 10A, and it basically, Harbor Masters are enabled, if they are given the ability to do so by the city, to permit these private docks. So, anybody can apply for one. We did have a little bit of conversation about that. Certainly doesn't mean you're gonna get one, but you can apply for it if you wish. And so, in conversation with the Harbor Commissioner who joined us, essentially, this is sort of like a new category of waterways permit. They want a $50 per year annual fee. The idea is not to generate, really generate revenue off of this, it's simply to create a tail so that there's some connection between the owners and making sure they filed, and creates a little bit more formality around it, rather than right now, sort of an informal, hey, have you checked your lines? Have you checked your chains? Are they good? That sort of thing. So, they have been debating about this. They did say that they were primarily using Gloucester, I think, as sort of a comparative idea, and that Gloucester does have this. Right now, this is proposed for residential private docks, only not for marinas, but that is something that they have been talking about as well, and so, I think that's something that they'll be continuing to, you know, sort of investigate and talk with marina operators and so forth to see how it could be done. They did note that Gloucester, for example, charges per square foot, as opposed to just a flat fee. On average, these are usually like, you know, six to eight feet wide by 20 feet, and so, it's really mostly right now, again, about attestation by the owner that their stuff has been checked, their installers are qualified, and things like that. So, to the last part, this is really an establishment of a new fee, and our structure is that that really needs to be codified into ordinance and then inserted into the appendix of our muni code, which is where the fees live. And so, I am joined by Ward 5 Councilor McCauley, Chair of Public Works and Safety. We redrafted it basically into an ordinance, because this one didn't even really say what is a seasonal dock permit, so it didn't even define it. So, I think it's a better format, and it really is consistent with the rest of our ordinance, so that's why I continued it, 'cause the committee's really looked at it, and we recommended receive and file on this, but we can have a debate if we want to have this fee or not, or at this late, at our next meeting on April 29th. So, that's why it's receive and file. Please hold this in memory. I will not do it. I don't have to bother you again with it in two weeks unless you wish, but that's where this all came from.
Thank you for the explanation. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call on receiving and filing Order 546.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Zied.
Yes.
Councilor Dunneou.
Yes.
Councilor Granis.
Yes.
Councilor Harmon.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll try and do a couple together here. So, motion collectively to approve Orders 547 and 548. These are both gift acceptances.
Second.
So, these are, as I mentioned, the Order 547 is $4,500 from the City Improvement Society, and 548 is $5,181.60, also from the City Improvement Society. 547, so the City Improvement Society is a longstanding organization, I guess, that had gone dormant for quite some time, but we've seen them a couple times now in recent time. They've kind of a little bit reinvigorated and offering to help the city through these gifts, and the committee did inspect both of these gifts. So, 547 is specifically to paint underneath the rail trail, so if you've walked down that way, sort of by the river's edge there, to sand and paint all three sides of the cement with the same gray paint. They provide some more detail about that. And then, 548 was also from the City Improvement Society, and there's sort of two purposes there. One is the Market Square Bullnose Flower Garden, and then the other one is improvements to the cobblestones around the flower beds, and they provide some bulleted lists of what they're gonna do. I do want to say that 548 was conditioned in committee. It wasn't amended per se, but there was a condition on the acceptance, and then that was that the gift is accepted on the condition that the donor shall coordinate with the Department of Public Services and Newburyport Police Department for any necessary police details, and to pay for said details directly. That was approved, that condition was approved. Was that you or me? And that was conditioned in committee 3 to 0, and then 547 and 548 were collectively recommended for approval 3 to 0. And I just want to explain, 548, the reason that condition came up is obviously that the area of work being specked is in the middle of the road effectively, and we just wanted to make sure that we were very clear that we don't want people working in the middle of the road without adequate public safety measures being taken for their safety and that of motorists and others around. So, that's 547 and 48, 3 to 0 on both in committee to accept.
Thank you. Any, Clark?
Just one question, Counselor.
Yes.
That language, the condition for 548 is?
In the minutes.
Very good.
So, easily found, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilor McCauley?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, I attended the meeting. I learned about the gifts. I think the gifts are very generous along the way. The only thing that I brought up at that meeting, and I'll bring up here for us to consider, is in both these instances, the donor is bringing their own contractor. And so, while everyone seemed to suggest that the numbers were so low, below $10,000, et cetera, along the way, it really opens a different type of Pandora's Box for the city, and I want us to be cautious of it more than anything else. I will support these two, but on the other hand, I just, the door that's open now is that folks who may have money, who'd like to donate, may, you know, take it upon themselves to make changes or to our infrastructure along the way because it benefits them. A couple years ago, we had someone do crack sealing on their roads, and they wanted the city to reimburse for it, things like that, because they had the money and a contractor who would do it at the time. Again, I understand people want to help, and I understand that our resources are limited, but when we do get a donation, and, you know, the language says that we'll pay the contractor, don't worry about it, then, you know, insurance liability crops up, you know, what happens when the contractor falls off a ladder inadvertently, or is bitten by a dog, or something like that? The city has extensive insurance, but it's not extended extensively to this, and it would be awkward for us to say, yes, we'll take a $5,000 donation, provided you also provide $2,000 of insurance to cover the $5,000 donation. And so, all I'm suggesting is that it, we may be going down a path where people are well-intentioned, but we also might want to caution folks about bringing their own contractor or the guy that will help them, et cetera, along the way. Thank you.
Worth looking into. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Lane?
I just wanted to echo, I'm in the same breath with what I've done, so, we just turned on, I mean, I personally, the law of obligation, I wasn't above gift donations coming in and saying, we want this just specifically for this. I'd like it to come in more as like a, you know, we'd like to see this happen, but don't promise anything on the other end. I'm more than happy to take in donations from private entities for various things, but I think there is a slippery slope here that, like Council McCauley mentioned, that they're gonna be coming with additional things and additional costs, additional liabilities to the city. So, I'm gonna say yes to this, but I also, I'm in the same breath.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? Councilor Dunneou?
Thank you, President. Just to sort of, while I do appreciate my fellow counselors' points, both taken and appreciated, I'll play a little devil's advocate to you in that, you know, we get a lot of gifts, right? Anytime that somebody wants to contribute toward any project forthcoming in the city or currently happening, all they have to do is put in the memo what it's for, and that is how they know it's gonna be designated. So, you know, what comes to mind is something, for instance, like the Bartlett Mall project, you know, playground project, had a good chunk of money that was raised by families and then subsequently donated for the purpose of that accessible playground, and in the memo of their checks, it was to say, you know, Accessible Playground Fund. So, I mean, in the same sort of breath, I just, you know, it's point well-taken, but I, you know, I definitely just would play a little bit of devil's advocate, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're looking for a roll call at this point?
On approving Orders 547, 548. Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zied?
Yes.
Councilor Dunneou?
Yes.
Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I will try and do all of the last three together, and if anybody is not happy with that, let me know, but transfer, motion to approve transfers 186 Harbor Master, $25,000 retained earnings to $25,000 Harbor Master Equipment, 187 Police MIS Communications, $6,500 to HR Assessment Center, same amount, and Order 550 and $800 gift acceptance from the Port Parks Alliance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, 186 is a transfer, as I mentioned, it's from the Harbor Master retained earnings, have 25K to Harbor Master Equipment, so just as a quick refresher, retained earnings is sort of the version of free cash for enterprise funds, so they've got some funds in there, and what they are asking us to do is move it into Harbor Master Equipment, same amount. What they'd like to do is replace an outboard engine on one of the boats that they have. We talked a little bit about that. It's about a 12- or 13-year-old boat, and the motor's about the same age, and it's basically run its course in terms of its life. So, we did ask how many hours are on it, and there's about 2,200 hours on the motor, which for boats is pretty old, so it is really time for it to go. They did do one of the typical best practices in terms of procurement, so that was based on the amount, so they got three quotes. We did ask if we could see the quotes, and the Finance Director did provide additional information to the committee. I didn't forward it to everybody. If you'd like it, you're welcome to have it, and those were forwarded. So, they are hoping to get this done for the season, and the 25K amount is considered the all-in amount, so that this would be ready to go without other funding sources. Transfer 187 is $6,500 to HR Assessment Center. So, just as a quick reminder, assessment centers are used when certain positions are going to be filled.
So, you know, what comes to mind is something, for instance, like the Bartlett Mall project, you know, playground project, had a, a good chunk of money that was raised by families and then subsequently donated for the purpose of that accessible playground. And in the, in the memo of their checks, it was to say, you know, accessible playground fund. So, I mean, in the, in the same sort of breath, I just, you know, I, it's point well taken, but I, you know, I definitely just would play a little bit of devil's advocate, that's all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're looking for a roll call this?
On approving orders four, 547, 548. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I will try and do all of the last three together. And if anybody is not happy with that, let me know. But transfer, motion to approve transfers 186 Harbor Master, $25,000 retained earnings to $25,000 Harbor Master Equipment, 187 Police MIS Communications, $6,500 to HR Assessment Center, same amount, and Order 550 and $800 gift acceptance from the Port Parks Alliance.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. So 186 is a transfer, as I mentioned, it's from the Harbor Master retained earnings, have 25K to Harbor Master Equipment. So just as a quick refresher, retained earnings is sort of the version of free cash for enterprise funds. So they've got some funds in there. And what they are asking us to do is move it into Harbor Master Equipment, same amount. What they'd like to do is replace an outboard engine on one of the boats that they have. We talked a little bit about that. It's about a 12 or 13-year-old boat, and that the motor's about the same age. And it's basically run its, its course in terms of its life. So we did ask how many hours are on it, and there's about 2,200 hours on the motor, which for boats is pretty old. So it is, it is really time for it to go. They did do one of the typical best practices in terms of procurement, so that was based on the amount. So they got three quotes. We did ask if we could see the quotes, and the finance director did provide additional information to the committee. I didn't forward it to everybody. If you'd like it, you're welcome to have it. And those were forwarded. So they are hoping to get this done for the season. And the 25K amount is, is considered the all-in amount, so that this would be ready to go without other funding sources. Transfer 187 is $6,500 to HR Assessment Center. So just as a quick reminder, assessment centers are used when certain positions are going to be filled. It is an alternative option to the civil, civil service system. That is the, the test list-driven sort of way of doing it in Massachusetts. The assessment center provides essentially a, it's a fork in the road. You can either go the civil service route, which is based on exams, and then there's a list, and then you go on the next on the list, is best to my understanding. And then there's this assessment center, which we've been using many times. This isn't the first time we've done this kind of transfer. And that actually gives the municipality a little bit more flexibility and input into the direction and the decision ultimately of the candidate that's chosen. And so why do they need the funds? Well, essentially, they had budgeted some funds towards assessment centers in our budget, but there has been a need for another assessment because there's another position. So one will be used to cover a fire lieutenant position, which is open, opening up. And the other one will, this, this specific transfer will be used to cover a police superior assessment center. So they budgeted for one, they need two, and so that's the $6,500. And the, this is essentially an inter, in a sense, an interdepartmental thing, because it's going from police to a police thing there as well. And so we, we did talk about that at length. And then we also asked where they kind of are at this point in the department, and they're still down two patrol officers, but they are expecting to get a new recruit. We had the benefit of the Public Works and Safety Chair with us that night. So that was helpful. So that's transfer 187, that was three to zero. I should say the engine, 186, was three to zero. And the last one was $800. That was Port Parks Alliance, two and saw two new trees at Mosley. The most controversial thing in committee was, is it Mosley Woods or Mosley Pines? I think it's Mosley Pines. Three to zero. And stop calling it Mosley Woods. Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Bless you. Yes.
Approving those three measures. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
So that's it for business tonight. Anybody who thought budget and finance was reasonable in 2024, I think, has been dissuaded of that notion with today's packet. So lots of stuff coming in. I just want to, right, immediately remind you that budget is not meeting on Thursday because we're doing next Tuesday and Wednesday for CPC, the 16th and the 17th. I think Community Services is now pushed for a week, so I'm still coordinating, but I will try and be after the typical committee meetings. You have the budget cycle workshops now, so you see all the meetings coming up. I'm sorry to say, even with that, I have a feeling we're going to have to add a meeting, maybe two, to clear out the other information, the other stuff that's come in tonight. And then I know that there's some more expected beyond just the packet, the CIP, et cetera. So we will get there, but thank you for your patience, and I will do my best on committee of the whole items to accommodate everybody that I can. That's it for budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for getting that scheduled up. Community Services, Counsel President?
Yeah, thank you. Nothing coming out tonight. I do want to say though, so as the Ward 1 Counselor mentioned, the next Community Services meeting has moved from April 16th to April 23rd, at the request of the administration. April 16th actually falls during school vacation week, and that would limit people, the, the general public's ability to participate with public comment. So we moved it to the, the next week. This does not, however, change the timeline of when we would have council, full council action, if this is to come out of committee on the 23rd, because our next council meeting would be on the 29th. So it wouldn't matter one way or the other. So the intention, as I've said to you all over email for that meeting, is to have Special Projects Manager Turner go through some alternative designs that she's been working with at The Architect. As well, I have made sure that we will have finance, engineering, the conservation administrator, planning and development, as well as the Director of Recreation and New Services present for the meeting, so that hopefully we can have any last questions that might be out there, that we might be able to have those answered and be able to take action on Order 537. That will be the only item in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Preston. And moving to general government, which would be me, I'll make a motion to receive and file Order 544.
Second.
Thank you. So this, we did discuss in committee earlier this evening, and Counselor Granis and I voted two to zero to receive and file this. So this had been submitted by Counselor Zied, really trying to, and I'll paraphrase for him, and he can say, say it better if he, if he wants to, or, or, or let me take it. Thought was, there have been problems with the current polling location for Ward 1P on Plum Island. That boathouse is owned by the city, leased to the Coast Guard Auxiliary for a long-term lease, is not in great condition. There's not, there's not a funding stream for maintenance there. So there's an issue there. And there's also been water, ice problems, parking there. So the accessibility is an issue. So the thought was to look at an alternative. You know, we, we all heard from many constituents who did not want to move it to the mainland. So we will receive and file this for now. Look at alternatives, perhaps Pitta Hall, which would involve Newbury, the, the private owner-manager of Pitta Hall, the Secretary of State's office, because they don't like you to have a polling location outside of your municipality. Although one can make the argument that Plum Island is, is probably unique in Massachusetts. Or also look at improving the access around the water and ice in that parking lot near the boathouse, or, or coming up with some ideas about how to better maintain the boathouse. So all of that's in play. But for now, to receive and file, it seemed like the wisest course. Counsel Zied?
Yeah, thank you. And that's a perfect summary, so I'm not going to repeat it. I just want to say very clearly, residents, you will still vote at the boathouse. This receiving file basically means no thank you at the moment, so that, that's going to be a closed conversation for now. But as we talked about in committee, I doubt it'll be closed forever. At some point, it will have to be addressed, whether that's through, like you said, the building getting some attention, and that improving the situation, or other things dictating it. I also want to reinforce that, to thanks to the elections clerk, you did talk with the Secretary of State, they just do not like the idea outside of your own municipality. So it's not impossible, but we were talking about home rule petitions. For those that are familiar, basically write your own state law for Newburyport to allow it, so that there's some considerations. But for right now, for stability and consistency, we're at the boathouse. I think this created a good conversation and a marker in the record for future iterations of it. So, and thank you to everybody who, I got even more than I think the council did. So thanks, everybody who reached out. See you at the boathouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call?
Roll call, receiving and filing 544. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Counselor Preston?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Great. So that passes to receive and file, license impairments. Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to make a motion to approve application 186.
Second.
Okay. So this is a application for, it is Love Local. It's a, it's going to be on May 9th from 3:00 to 9:00. And it happens primarily in the, for our purposes, in the public alley from Bar 25 to Jemah Coughlin. And then portions of it are also in the area of N Street. The only thing that's new this year is they're having a, an event earlier in the, in the day that's open to the public. They're inviting young children to come in and do something in preparation for Mother's Day. And then when that ends, it'll be a ticketed event where they'll be serving wine and having a speaker speak. And this is a fundraiser. The fundraiser is to benefit the Runway for Recovery. So that's, that's all I have. This came out of committee, three to zero.
For approval. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call?
Roll call, approving application 186. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application 190 and 192.
Second.
Thank you. So these are the next three, in fact, but these two are from the chamber. And they're for the spring and fall festivals that the chamber has had, has had every year. There's been, there's no changes to what they've done in previous years. The, the first date is May 25th and 26th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, rain or shine. And the second date is October 12th and 13th, also from 10:00 AM to 4:00 AM. It'll be the typical chamber event where they have vendors at, in, at the waterfront park. They have reached out to the Waterfront Trust for their permission to have access to their, their permission to, to access the Waterfront Trust's land. And this was also approved in committee, three to zero.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Motion to collectively approve application 190 and 192. Roll call?
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve application 191.
Second.
So thank you. This is for the, again, from the chamber. This is the, the car show event that'll be in August, August 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00 P., 8:00 PM. It's the same car show that they've done every year, where they bring the vintage cars in. There'll be some street closures up and down, for the, up along State Street, and all the adjoining streets will be closed out. They will be, they will not be using the bank's parking lot this year for any of the, for any of the events. There's construction undergoing there as well at this time. So that's the only real change. Again, the, all, all the sign-offs from the city officials are in place, the insurance is in place. And this came out of committee also with an, with a three-nothing vote to approve.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Planning and Development, Counselor Shan?
Thank you. Motion to receive and file Communication 535, Development Agreement Regarding the Quotable Funding.
Second.
Okay. Made and seconded? Any discussion? Counselor Shan?
So just, yeah, so the committee discussed, this is a former plan, but it was a leftover communication, so we're just doing some cleanup to the committee, so it's three to zero as we receive and file.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, receiving and filing Communication 535?
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Shan? What else?
Motion to approve Appointment 482, Barbara Riley to Conservation Commission.
Second.
Okay. Made and seconded?
All right. So Ms. Riley did come and speak of her desire to be on the Conservation Commission, and she spoke with her prior work experience, which I have to say, I'm very biased in this point, because she was head of Departmental Health and Safety at General, that's what she was in London for quite some time. So I know what she is capable of, dealing with a fuel farm that has jet engine, jet engines, all the, going to know the things that we use to make jet engines, the fact that we're right next to the Sodom and the Riddim and the Runny Marsh. She dealt with the federal, state, and local EPA and Conservation Commission. So there is, we're lucky to have her stepping up for this, and committee voting three to zero to approve her for the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing none. Roll call?
Approving Appointment 482. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
All right, motion to approve, ordered 166, Amendment to Chapter 565, Specialized Security Code.
Second.
Point of order?
Yes.
The sponsoring counselor isn't present, so I'm not sure how the chair or the chair of Planning and Development would like to handle that.
We want to postpone this to the next meeting. I didn't appreciate the sponsor, but it's not.
Yeah, I didn't realize that either.
You can waive the rules or change the sponsor.
Or just, we could move it to a date certain, if that's, which would be next week.
We could do all of the above. It's a little dicey when the sponsor's not here. It's supposed to be, we could insert.
I would recommend we do it at the date certain.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move it to a date certain, which is next council meeting?
29.
29th?
29.
April 29th?
Okay, that's, motion's been made. Was there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Harmon or Counselor Shan? Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, roll call.
Motion to move the matter to April 29th. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan? I'm sorry, Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Sorry, Greg.
Thank you, Greg Riles for being here. Anything further to report? Counsel Shan, thank you.
Yes, we did discuss the Medicaid community efforts, but just wanted to give folks an update on what we've heard in direct reports and what was going on in the bag. So, just to give folks an update, both about the current 40-yard district being a great starting point. The state has given us over 900 lifts out of the 1292 required for the Medicaid community funding. So, we're not going to need to include any of the story out of the Low Street area as part of the Medicaid community effort. The bag was going through other options for extending the 40-yard down to train station, and we think there's going to be enough space there to accommodate the additional 360-plus or so units that we're going to need. The new report should feel pretty good about where we stand right now. We're not going to be in the position Milton was. Again, the Low Street area areas aren't going to be needed, and the other good thing that the direct report told us was the grants that the state gave us for working on the Low Street area rezoning has been extended to June of 2025. So, there's no deadline on that until next year. So, we'll be able to focus on it with the state community for the remainder of this year. So, we're in a good spot for the Medicaid community funding. Just wanted to give folks a good update. And that's it for today. Well, I'll take one more back. Planning and Development is supposed to meet at 6:30 next Tuesday, but since it sounds like we're not going to be impacted by the community service meeting, we'll move it back to 6:00. And I think the only thing we'll be discussing will be further information on the Medicaid community, so 6:00 next Tuesday.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Shan. Moving to Public Works and Safety.
Thank you, Counsel President. Motion to receive and file Communication 546.
Second.
Thank you. Communication 546 is from the parking clerk. It had gone through a review of the Parking Advisory Committee. It had been approved as well. The parking clerk and the parking committee have recommended to extend parking for employees in the Green Street Lot for, through May 31st, 2024. This is a program that they run annually off-season. They bring in, they open up spaces in the Green Street Lot, they mark them with a blue dot, so employees know where they were. They keep track of them with our license plate reader in the EV that we have that monitors this. Because of the extension of construction down on the waterfront, the request was to extend these spots. They will go from 38 to 32, but they think that 38 spots to 32 spots, but they think that's sufficient and can handle it. Again, the statement and request and advice to us is that they are going to extend these from April 1 through May 31 for the employees.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Sorry, just one.
Okay, Counsel Zied?
Well, there's two things. So, I guess I'm not understanding. Is this an ask, or are they just telling us? That's one question. And then, two is, how confident are we that, you know, May 31 is very much the beginning of the season? So, I mean, I haven't heard anything recently on the waterfront parks. I don't really know where things are, but going beyond, in other words, going beyond May 31 probably would be hard to do.
So, what was the first one again?
Is this, is this a receiving file? So, this is just going to be designated by the parking clerk?
So, the parking clerk made his pitch to the Parking Advisory Committee, who reviewed and approved this. And so, this is a program they already run, and so, it's been running for a number of years. And so, this was really an extension of that service along the way. So, the Parking Advisory Committee thought it would be best that it came in just as a communication, because we're extending it, which leads to the May 31 date, we were told, and the planning director is the PM on the project, believes and is told that the contractor will be gone by then. Along the way, we all agree, 531 isn't, going beyond that, isn't a date anybody's happy with along the way. So, let's pray for some good weather and get the contractor out, and then it will all work itself out.
Thank you. So, yeah, just, I mean, just for posterity, I mean, the Parking Advisory Committee cannot approve anything. It's an advisory committee. So, I don't care, but we can receive and file this, but just for future sake, you know, whatever the underlying enabling power is, it's either vested in the parking clerk, and they're allowed to do it through that, or it just needs to become an order, an ordinance for a temporary thing. So, I'll yield with that. I'll leave it there.
Counsel Lane?
I'm just going to make a suggestion that I'd love to see the blue dot go throughout the city, and the employees be able to park wherever they do and have a carry with the permit, just as a suggestion. I think the employees of the city work hard enough to make what they make, and they deserve to have more parking, not less. So, I would, that's just my suggestion, saying it out loud. I'd like to see employees be able to park with the blue dot on their sticker anywhere in the city, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Receiving and filing Communication 546. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Motion to approve Order 549.
Second.
This is a handicap spot at the location of Auburn Street and High Street at the new playground that has opened up there. We, this will be one space on the easterly side of Auburn Street at the intersection of Hyde. There's a picture of it in your packet. It is the first space after the stop line behind the crosswalk. It has a curb cut, as well as the gate entrance to the park along the way. Everyone thinks this is just the right spot to be able to do that. It's only one spot. We don't think it's going to be impacted, any neighborhood issues along the way. We didn't have any public comment at our committee meeting, and so, we approved this, three to zero.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Approving Order 549. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There is a Communication 533 in your packet that is, was indecision on my part, and I'm going to withhold that, I'm going to hold that. Didn't come out of it, it's still here. I'll withhold that till next time. And just the only update is, we are changing our date from 4:15 to 4:22. That's a Monday. We're meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 to handle our PWS items that we have in committee now for the 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, that's it for committee. Go to the order. Must have some college basketball fans. Counsel Zied?
I just wanted to say, I'll coordinate with you, Mr. President, on the fire chief appropriation. If there's a desire for an executive session or something, I'm going to defer to you a little bit and see if we want to just do that maybe at the end of a regular session, a meeting. So, I'll communicate with you and the clerk to help.
Sounds good. Good point. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call.
Yeah, no, if I can just back up for one second, Department of Works and Safety, the Mark One Lane flooding issue?
Yes.
Can we reassign that? Can we, with any chance, we could take that out and put it